So it is 7 o'clock, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Mr. Placo, can you call the roll please?
Jennifer Hardy.
Here.
Jack Miley.
Here.
Belinda Grassi.
Here.
Tom Hack.
Here.
Steve Jeffries.
Here.
We will go ahead and skip the pledge since we just did that 15 minutes ago and go on to our organizational meeting with the election of officers. So I'm looking for nominations from the floor. They don't require any kind of second. Once a nomination is made or a request for further nominations is made, if none, a motion to close is in order. Nomination for President.
I would like to nominate Jim Harden.
I would accept that. Do you have any other nominations?
I would like to have... I'm a Jack Miley.
Mr. Miley, do you accept?
Yes, I accept that.
Okay, then we have that up for discussion.
I want you to do it.[59.92][63.42](Laughter) How's that take this question?
(Inaudible) That was good, Jack. Oh my gosh, you're so funny. Okay, is there any other discussion?
That answered it.
Thank you, Steve. The election has a head.
All right, if there's no further discussion, Mr. Placo, can you call the roll please?
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Hack.
Aye.
Steve Jeffries.
Aye.
Jennifer Hardy.
Aye, motion carried. Nomination for Vice President.
Here you go, Jack.
I would like to nominate Jack Miley. Do you accept?
Yes, I do.
Any discussion? Very good, thank you. Mr. Placo, call the roll please.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Hack.
Aye.
Steve Jeffries.
Aye.
Jennifer Hardy.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Motion carried. I know, right? I think about that. All right, so we've got a resolution to establish the following schedule for meetings during the calendar year 2017.
Oh, gosh.
And I...
I left that paper back there.
Can you go grab his paper?
No. I'll just write it on the back of this.
Are Tuesdays still good for people?
How does everyone feel about Tuesdays still?
Yep, Tuesdays work for me. Tuesdays work.
Jeffries?
It works.
I've got all my life around me.
All right, so looking at the calendar, that would be then January 24th, correct? Number 1st? February 28th? March 28th?
Oh, the 28th, yeah.
Is that break? Okay, do you wanna do the week prior then on the 21st?
Yep.
April 25th?
Does anybody wanna do the 18th instead? The 25th, I may be at a conference.
For April?
For April.
I have no problem.
Which one is... Oh, never mind, it doesn't matter. It's Tuesday. Okay, yeah, 18th's fine.
Okay, so April will be April 18th. May would be the 23rd. Is that okay?
It's the 25th. Belinda?
What's it?
April 18th is Tax Day. I know you're... You mean, is that gonna close it?
Oh.
I am so done. I'm done on the 15th.
Mr. Miley's thinking that maybe we don't do May 23rd? He's got a conflict that day. Can we do the 16th? Because that'll still be just before we excel since we're doing April 18th. We do May 16th instead, is that okay? 16th? June 27th? July 25th? Well, in some of these, I think last year too, what we've done in the past is we just put them down as we get closer. If we need to shuffle some things around, we certainly can too, instead of trying to...
I have no idea what my schedule is.
Is that okay, Jack?
Yeah, on February, so...
Okay, I do, like, right.
August 22nd? September 26th?
I already have them in the calendar.
October 24th? November, we typically do what, the second week, right? It'd be November 14th.
That's OSBA.
Oh, okay, is it 20... Okay, so 21st then? You're right, so that's what we did this year too, didn't we?
Right, we did the week of Thanksgiving.
Right. In the past, I feel like we did it earlier.
So we do the 20th?
20th. Monday, the 20th instead?
Yeah.
Sure. And December, I believe we did what, the second week, so the 12th? Right?
Yeah. Will I read them again?
Yeah. So I have January 24th, February 28th, March 21st, April 18th, May 16th, June 27th, July 25th, August 22nd, September 26th, October 24th, November 20th, and December 12th. Meetings will begin at 7:00 PM. Still all works for everybody?
Yep.
All right. I'll make a motion for that if you can please have a second.
I'll second that.
Ms. Grassi, Mr. Placo, can you call the roll please?
Tom Hack.
Aye.
Steve Jeffries.
Aye.
Jennifer Hardy.
Aye.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, standing authorizations. Motion to approve the following standing authorizations, 1 through 25, as recommended by the Treasurer and Superintendent of the Riverside Local Schools, so that the business of the district may be done expediently. And I have a...
Can I see that real quick?
Yes, you can.
That's not good.
Mr. Miley, discussion?
Yeah. Let's see, I think it was number 16. I had a little bit of a concern with the amount.
Can you read number 16 for us?
Authorize the superintendent to serve as purchasing agent for the school district and to spend a maximum of $15,000 without prior approval of the board such expenditures to present to the board's approval at the next regular meeting. My concern is that sometimes I've noticed over the years that we are playing some, a little bit of a game on contracts with other companies, making them just short of $15,000, turning around and doing it again later on, and I have a concern about that. So I guess what I'm recommending is that we lower that amount to maybe 10.
I mean, that's fine with the board. I don't remember any time that we've ever played games with the $15,000. Typically, we have that in there for emergency purposes. I do the same thing with Mr. Wayne, or that any time there's an emergency, if there's anything for $5,000 or less, I have him do it and then come to me later if there's a pipe dipper or something of that sort. But there's...
I'm not aware of any instances back when I've been here since August 1st.
How many times have we have did 1499 or gotten close?
Anytime we've... I can't remember the last time we've done it, really.
Dan, do you know?
Not that I'm aware of.
Like the roofing stuff?
We split the one contract with... Into two sections just because we didn't have the money for it. That was with Brunyan.
That was for $12,000. That doesn't even apply to this.
Yeah, I'm saying that's the only thing that we've ever come close on that I'm aware of.
If the amount was lowered, would there be a lot more that would need to come to the board? Do you feel like there's a lot to spend between $10,000 and $15,000? Is there... Would there be a concern lowering? Does anyone else have a concern with keeping it at 15?
Are you comfortable with 10 with that?
So I mean, it's always been 15. I mean, 10 it doesn't mean... I'm still coming to the board anyway. If I'm spending that kinda money, I'm calling ya.
Right, right. I guess, I'm fine with 15. If in conjunction with that, if you could text us or let us know that something is up, or send an email and text us that the email's there, that I think would make sure that we had visibility across the board as to what's going on and could alleviate any potential misunderstandings down the road.
Would you be okay with that, Jack? Keeping a closer eye, if Jim were able to give us more heads up on...
Notice before it's done?
Yeah, that would be...
If it's noticed before it's done, then yes, I can look at that.
And just, I guess to be clear, it would need to be by email. You know, he gives a heads up, there's an email out there, but the email would have to be on the Riverside email system.
All right, is there any other discussion then? There's another discussion? Can I have a second? Or we have a second please? Mr. Placo, call the roll please.
Steve Jeffries.
Aye.
Jennifer Hardy.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Hack.
Aye.
Motion carried. Standing committee appointments for 2017. You know, I think we had a really great year this year, and it's been a really good year. I mean, the last 12 months have been really great. I personally would love to see everyone stay on the committees that they're on. You know, sometimes it takes half a year even to get rolling with these, you know, to kinda know what you're going to learn. That's just my personal opinion, is I like to see all the committees stay the same. I don't know how everybody else feels about that.
I don't have any problem with that. I agree.
I don't have a problem. I'm good.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, so let's go over to again Finance and Audit. Currently, the chairperson is Mrs. Grassi, correct?
Yes.
Let's see that. And the member is Mr. Jeffries?
Yes.
Personnel, the chairperson is Mr. Jeffries, correct?
Yes.
Member is Mrs. Grassi?
Yep.
Program of Programming, Chairperson is Mr. Miley? And this member is Mr. Hack?
Yep.
Buildings and Grounds, Chairperson is Mr. Hack? And member is Mr. Marley? Okay, that... For a second, please, on this?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Grassi. And can you call the roll, please?
Jennifer Hardy.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Hack.
Aye.
Steve Jeffries.
Aye.
Motion carried. Standing Board Liaisons, does anyone have any desire to change any of that?
More than enough, maybe we should have a facility unless we consider Buildings and Grounds that role.
I kind of assumed Buildings and Grounds was that role?
Yep.
Unless we think that we need to add an additional, but I mean, we already got two, four members out of it anyhow, so...
Right, I think that that makes sense to just have Buildings and Grounds take that aspect.
Does anyone want to change what they're doing currently? Or do we wanna keep everything the same? I think alumni, it's been nice to see you've done a nice job with that this year, and that's been...
Been busy.
Yeah, that's good. You good with Strategic Plan still?
Yep.
All right, so Strategic Plan still, it'll be Mr. Hack. Jack, are you still okay with boosters?
Yes.
All right. Belinda, it's still okay with Legislative?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so Mrs. Grassi is the... Or the... The Legislative Liaison, boosters is Mr. Miley. Alumni is Mr. Jeffries. And Superintendent's Business Advisory Liaison is myself. Can I please have a second for that?
A second.
Who moves a second?
Jim.
Is there any further discussion? And let's call the roll, please.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Hack.
Aye.
Steve Jeffries.
Aye.
Jennifer Hardy.
Aye.
Motion carried. And with that, we'll make a... I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn to our regular meeting.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Hack. Can you call the roll, please, Mr. Placo?
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Hack.
Aye.
Steve Jeffries.
Aye.
Jennifer Hardy.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right. Moving on to meeting number three. Mr. Placo, I'm gonna call this meeting to order.
Jennifer Hardy.
Here.
Here. Belinda Grassi.
Here.
Tom Hack.
Here.
Steve Jeffries.
Here.
Notice this meeting is given in accordance with the provisions of Law 0164R, the Riverside Local Board of Education, which is adopted in accordance with Section 1.450 of the Ohio Vice Code and the Ohio Administrative Procedures Act. We are going to start with special reports. Mr. Carlos?
Yes, we have two special reports tonight, and we have Representative Steve Wazinski from Pennion-Howey, with a couple of other representatives that he's gonna introduce in just a moment. This is the second half of a presentation I had begun last month about the timelines, the roles, goals, and controls of our facility plan. Mr. Wazinski?
We will start shortly. And while we're waiting, I just want to reintroduce, because on Wednesday, I know there's going to be some folks touring a couple of facilities, and your tour guides will be Tracy Cadwick and John DeFrance, and part of our team from the interview. And so they will be with you, I will not. So I just wanted to reintroduce that.
That was your drive, right?
I just got a text from Mr. St. Clair, it's a power outage in the vacant rural area, Mohawal, 1,500 homes without power, hope to get it restored by 4:00 AM.
You can get closer.
It's not like Cheryl over there wants to surprise.
That are newer.
Oh, really? Sorry, it's great. Okay.
I have occasion for six months. I can get tomorrow, because I get paid in three years.
Too much for Cal.
Trying to make it software.
Right.
Sorry, first time a computer user wants authorization to use it.
All right. Are we gonna sit down? Are we gonna stand or do I just sit down?
Yeah.
Okay. Where we left off last time, I haven't made our call. Had gone through about half of the presentation, but actually went through the very long half. And we went through the half where we made a lot of discussions and we came up to a lot of conclusions. I think this next half will be a little bit shorter. It's really more about the process that will be happening during the design phase. And I first just wanted to go over, here were the items that I wrote down from when we were talking about goals, and we came to these ideas. Students' goal personnel decisions, designing buildings for 650 capacity. Elementary buildings should each have a unique design, design theme for each building. Buildings could be one or two stories, whatever works best. You know, flat. The building should support cutting-edge curriculum. Each building should have an innovation lab to support STEM. Gym sizes should be larger than elementary gyms to provide adequate space for practice, space for concession standard gym. Materials should be able to function for performance with stage designed to be energy efficient. Utilize buildings, finishes and building systems to minimize maintenance and service. And all buildings will have the same Riverside brand name.
I took notes.
Right, awesome.
Is that good?
Yes.
All right, so...
Exciting. These are now our pill takers. It's real.
I was trying to take notes as I was talking. So... I will send all of this to you with all of the information once we get through it. But my... Let's see, my slides, let's go to slide 37. Go to slide 37, next. And that's where we kind of ended up last time. And that goes right about here. So just talking a little bit about as this project goes forward, just some ideas for engagement and ways to get the public involved. Certainly a groundbreaking ceremony of some sort. We can help you with like a postcard that you can send out for that to get people to come. Also just involving the kids and then making just an exciting thing. Tours during construction. And we'll want to talk with our, when we get the construction manager on board, to be able to take periodically tours through the building, and then of course, that has to be coordinated with them for safety. Dedications, final dedications and open houses. And then just to, you know, have a good way to just have news releases to the newspapers and just to have, here's what's happening, you know, kind of monthly or bi-monthly activities. So just to kinda keep the, you know, the excitement going throughout the whole project. So we wanna talk just a little bit about funding, and I have what I'm gonna show next, which is a preliminary budget sheet that I had shared with Gary and Jim. And we will expand that, but just to make sure that we're beginning to track the project first globally in big picture, where we're gonna then break it down, and we'll have more of a budget tracking tool during construction. But, you know, there will be contingencies, there'll be items for furniture, for technology, for other various areas throughout the project that the budget will be tracked. And if there are any specific budget line items or expectations of board, let us know so we know that we have what we need to do, what we need to set aside, or what we need to categorize. This is the summary that I have here. Okay. About almost to the bottom in the middle, total bond issue amount, $38 million, $540,000. Total bond issue. And then you see above all the line items that are set aside. So all the line items set aside, I've broken it out by building. And again, I've broken it out to show what was the Ohio Facility Construction Commission budget, as well as the additional space budget that's your perceived by. So that's why these are broken out individually. There's also what's called a site safety allowance, which will be for any type of traffic improvements on the site and the site, like at intersections or turn lanes, anything that would be necessary to change the road. So there's line items for that. Line items for demolition for each project and abatement. I'm just right now showing a, just a contingency, which doesn't have to be, but I'm just, have just a line item that says, if there's any need to go off the site, $0.5 million. And that's because if you go off the site, OSFC doesn't pay for that piece. But we had...
I'm sorry, what does that really mean?
It would mean if you had to extend, say, a water line off the site to connect for water, that piece of the water line that's not actually on your property, OSFC would take that and put it in the non-fundable, co-fundable category. So you would not get credit for that portion of that. And we had, there was always a line item carried in those original calculations for wastewater treatment or whatever with that is determined to be on each of the sites as far as dealings with sanitary. So that adds up to a little under $37 million, which means right at this point in time, unassigned is 1.5 million. So we'll determine what those unassigned categories would be to cover.
Would that unassigned be the land purchase?
It could be land purchase, yes. It could be anything that was within the bond language, and if that land purchase would be falling within that, so we would then be able to take out those amounts from that to know where we are. So, big picture, where we are, and we'll track that in more detail as we move on.
Just a quick question. So there, when we do the initial, you know, design, and then we move into the construction phase, would we as a district be billed by invoice from you? And would that be the same process that the construction manager at risk would do as well?
Yes, good question. There will be, for on the architect's side, we'll invoice monthly, and that'll be per a schedule of where we are in the phases of construction, how far we are complete with each of those. The construction manager during the design time will have some level of pre-construction services that they would invoice for. And that would be on a monthly basis as well, and we'll review and approve those. And then during construction, it's really the built work that they're invoicing for, plus their fees. They're gonna have fee and overhead and their labor costs are all part of that, and so that fraction of that amount is billed each month as well. And so once we get to the point of seeing what all those costs are, we'll be able to put together, we'll see like what an expected draw schedule would be for the project. And I know you'll probably wanna know what that is. To track that all the way through from start to finish, you know, when the funding needs to be.
I have two questions. All your, all those fees that are built into the...
Yes.
The top line purchase price?
Yes. Everything, this is, when you look at, say, the building combined, each building being about $17 million, that's construction plus fees plus CM cost, all included.
If we were to get a owner's rep, that'd be a contingency amount?
That would have to come out of this line item right here.
Right, the 1.5.
Yes.
And is there 1.5? When you look at that number, is that adequate?
It should be. I guess unless things, you know, we start pulling a lot of things out from this, it should be okay.
Pretty typical then.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, because any of these things, like, let's say we sell hens, so there's no abating and demoing it, then that would...
You don't spend that.
Right, and that'd kinda fall back into the contingency pot, right?
And I think that was the initial, what we initially were thinking about when we decided on the $30 million was, is there enough built in for the contingencies that we should utilize? So just wanna make sure we are on the right page.
And that's why I wrote optional too on these, because if you find another way to dispense of a building that doesn't cost you money, who knows? Your exception. Any questions on that? So the process for design, I'm gonna go through that briefly, just to give you an idea of what's happening at each phase. And the phases are what you see here. Names for each of the phases. Now, what I'm not showing here is one of the nuances of the construction manager at risk, and that is the fact that there will be what's called a GMP, which is a guaranteed maximum price. And that will be the point in time where the CM is going, you know, will agree to a price that they're going to provide the construction for. So it will generally occur late in construction documents so that they have the information to give you the best price. So in the first phase, program of requirements, that is really kind of building the menu of all the rooms that are going into the building by number of rooms and the amount of square footage for each room. And so when you get that whole document, it will be a list of every space, and it will add up to the total space in the building. We'll be working through that, but one of the things we discussed with Bill Prentisil from OSFC, and it makes a lot of sense, is to do the program of requirements in conjunction with schematic design. And the reason for that is because we'll be thinking a lot about how the building is going together as we're talking about the program, and what type of common spaces there might be, if there are extended learning areas or spaces that are shared. It's sometimes difficult to plan that in just an Excel spreadsheet without thinking about what that means graphically. So we can do these together a lot more efficiently, and you'll understand it a lot better because it'll make more sense to pull everything together and show how things go together. So the schematic design is taking all the spaces and essentially building that first floor plan. So all the adjacencies are laid out in that floor plan. So the basic plan of the building is established, the types of systems that are going to go So the basic plan of the building is established, the types of systems that are going to go in the building, we'll talk about that for mechanical and general systems like electric and plumbing. Big decisions like that will be discussed. Site, site circulation, site organization, we'll have that as part of schematics. And at the end, there will be a time where the whole project is costed out. The CM will put together an estimate, what they are seeing on the documents. We'll have a lot of dialogue with the CM about, you know, what are you expecting this to be, a lot of back and forth discussion, so that at the end, we can come together and say, here's what everyone agrees the cost of the project is in the schematics. And at that point in time, you as a board would need to pass a resolution approving the schematic design, schematics and program of requirements together. So that'll be one of our checkpoints that we'll have. So we'll have some paperwork that we'll have to do with the OSFC to make to document that and a cost estimate and a resolution to do that. So this is kind of big picture, big picture plan. The next phase, design development, is really getting down into the nitty-gritty of decisions. And this is the time period where we're going to want to be meeting with, one-on-one with each of the user groups within the building to talk specifically about their spaces. Talk with, you know, art, talk with music, with P.E., with, you know, kindergarten teachers. And to really get into how do rooms lay out, what needs to be in there, where do outlets need to be placed, where does key work need to go, what type of boards do you want on the walls? So it'll be, there'll be just hundreds and hundreds and thousands of little decisions that are being made during this phase. And this will be the phase where generally the most people are reached out to within your district, because we're really getting down to the people actually using the rooms to talk about this.
Yep. Is it before the big picture stage, like the one before this, is that when we're doing the reaching out, like to focus groups and community members?
Yeah, let me go back, because that's a good point that I didn't really talk about. We should be doing the reaching out now. And that would be...
Now.
And that would be...
Yeah. I realize I'm right, but soon is what you're saying, tomorrow. I will start tomorrow. Okay.
Yes. And so what we're wanting to do is during schematic design, is when we want to get those big ideas out, to really talk about all of that. And that we want to incorporate into this schematic design.
Okay. Thank you.
And this is where your tours, you know, you go on tours, take pictures, come back with ideas, things you like, things you don't like. And really, that'll all play a part in our listening to what works for you.
And Jack, and that's what you guys are doing.
Yes, so we're, some of us are going on Thursday to start touring.
Right.
And so I guess my question now is, so I know you just said to Melissa that focus groups start now, but then are we, as a district, first deciding what type of building we want before we're deciding, like, I mean, with the focus group, you know what I mean, like going deeper into the focus group?
It'd be good if those focus groups could kind of have like their own set of like goals that we, you know, like we talked about here, but more focused on the building itself.
Okay, so maybe get some pictures back and say, look at some of this stuff, rather than dragging them to...
Yeah, right. Like, did we say, okay, we want a transitional building and not a focus group saying, but we want a traditional building and that we at least sort of...
And is it beneficial to have somebody go, soup to nuts, I love that phrase, but to go, to be, if they're going to be in a focus group, should they be the teacher that takes us all the way down to where the cabinets are going to go, or is it better to mix things up? Or does it not matter? Do you see what I'm saying? Like, if we have a focus group of teachers, okay?
The answer typically is yes.
Okay.
And you're going to discover very early on who the stakeholders are, who the folks that are so interested in this process that they want to be with it on the way.
Okay, okay.
Some people will drop off, some people really want to hear.
But if we can keep a few from beginning to end, that's a good thing.
Really good.
And I suggest also, as Steve said, when you go to buildings, take pictures, tons of pictures of the things that you like. And I've had people post them on boards so that should someone come, you know, someone who doesn't come to the first couple of schools, the lady goes to two other ones that you visit, you can show them things from the other buildings to develop a consensus of what you like. You know, you may walk into a building at first and say, I don't like that. By the time you see it in three different buildings on how it's used, it can change your mind.
Okay.
So having images to look at.
Okay, that's a good idea, thank you.
And I think Steve, to answer your question too, is I think what we were kind of thinking about too is, you know, if doing some of these initial tours and things like that, because Jack and I do have more daytime availability to do these kind of things, you know, we bring things back to the group and maybe we find a building type we all like a lot. At that point, we try to get back out as a group, to get everyone else to physically see it more than just pictures. So just kind of do the legwork and bring it back.
We talked too about design teams for each building, so we can get those organized, so we can have that group begin in the not-too-distant future of starting to meet with those teams specifically and then setting up a series of meetings with them so we can start developing the plans.
When you have a design team, are you looking for not only staff, but looking for community members?
If they can, if they can be consistent is one of the, is very important.
Absolutely.
I mean, yes. It's great to have, it's great to have community participation. The challenge is if it's not consistent, because then we do spend a lot of time, you know, kind of reinventing the last meeting. So it's great, we need people to come to all the meetings.
Thank you.
Do you plan to have a student contingent?
I don't know. Elementary kids though.
Everybody's looking to me.
I don't know. We hadn't really talked about it, I guess, yet, you know what I mean?
But I don't know, we haven't really talked about it.
I mean, typically, how does that typically work? I mean, especially at the elementary...
We talked about high school kids, having some, okay.
They have to be younger high school kids though, too, because we're talking about...
But they don't have to have any, they don't necessarily have to even see it to fruition, but they can still be a part of, this is what I wish I would have had, or this is what I think is necessary as, as you're... I still think they have ideas.
One way we discovered, you know, who would stick with the process was, we had summer planning sessions for a project, and those students that were willing to give up some of their summertime and attend all of those, really stuck with the project 100% all the way through. And it's really an enriching experience for the students that do it, but it's really valuable to you folks to come up with the right answer.
Mm-hmm.
So we were at design development, and really, this is the highly detailed part of the process where we are going to get very in-depth with the design of the mechanical system, the lighting, lighthouse, technology, plumbing, and to the point where the majority, the vast majority of decisions are made by the end of design development. And so when we get to the end of design development, we've got a very well flushed-out set, and that set of drawings is then used again for that cost estimating. And now we're really beginning to hone in on details, so we're really getting a lot better look at what that cost is with some more confidence, because there's a lot more information, a lot more decisions that are made by this time. So again, at the end of design development, it would be another checkpoint for you to pass a resolution and have that approval documented.
Just, or as far as timelines go, how far from now are, like, how long does that take?
I think a lot depends on when we can get going on this schematic design in earnest, and that's, I mean, it's good that the tours are going soon. And again, I'm showing, say, two to three months for schematic design, and I didn't really mention, I'm sorry, program requirements. So you might be looking at three to four months for the two of those. So you're probably getting to the, easily the end of April before that, and then design development is falling sometime in the summer for that to happen. So, you know, we're six, seven months into the project when we get to the end of design development. So we're probably August by the time we get there.
That's a cool time though, because that's when school starts and you can...
Yeah, and then there'll be a lot, yeah, there'll be a lot to show at that point in time, a lot of information, images. Then the last phase of documents is called construction documents, and that really is what it is. It's us putting together the final documents that the CM is going to use to give its pricing done. So really finishing everything. So we're not going to be continuing design during construction documents, because the design development piece would really have resolved all of that. So this is really just kind of, what I mentioned was, the GMP would happen probably pretty close to the end of construction documents, and that's where you have a number from CM. And we'll be asking you questions like, do you want, I'm assuming you do, but do you want the buildings combined? And the benefit of bidding them combined is that the plumber's going to bid the same things for both buildings, the HVAC contractor's going to bid the same things for both buildings. I would think the answer is yes, but we talked about that, whether or not you want individual or separate. We'll probably have to track the costs individually, but I'm thinking from your standpoint, you want to have the same contractors and the same suppliers giving you some uniformity throughout the...
We just make management that much more simple to accomplish.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I talked about the buyout process through the CM and how you have the right to select those contractors who are invited to bid, so that you have a refined list of contractors who are bidding. So again, it's not a, it's not what people think of as a notice in the newspaper, everybody come bid. It is a controlled bidding environment through the CM. And they still have to provide you all the information of the bid, but you know who's providing prices to the CM. And so again, that was what we talked about last time. So that will occur, the bidding and buyout, and then from that point, they'll, they will be able to begin doing constructions.
So it looks like almost April of next year?
We are, when we talk to the CM, we'll try to, we'll work through, I think it was in March or April, I'm not so sure of the timeline you also see them being on board, I think it was somewhere in that vicinity. But we need to talk with them about the schedule and where things will be. If we're able to do anything this fall, I think will depend on the decisions that are made and would there be an ability to do any type of cycle or technical note at this point. If not, then all construction would start in the spring of next year.
Next year?
Yeah.
So we have three board members that are up for reelection, and we want to see how far we can get into it before that period, which is November.
We'll have pretty much all the decisions will be made by that point in time, and we'll be locked down to what's really forward by then. So then we move into construction administration, and we will be doing observational work, having weekly progress meetings, there'll be a lot of paperwork that's going to go back and forth, requests for interpretation information from CM, potential changes that come through, and we try to have a monthly meeting that we call the core meeting, kind of like OSFC does, a monthly meeting. It's an update of essentially all the, John presented this from us, the CM, from you, if you had an owner's rep, that they would be there. And it's really just a monthly progress meeting for John.
What's realistic to expect with regard to change orders?
Did you ask, because we're going to talk about that.
Terrific.
I like that there's some...
And then post-construction is really getting all the documentation to you, owner's manuals, training, materials for attic stock, warranty information, all that will be put together for you, so you'll have that. And then I'll have them walk through and make sure that everything's fine, you know, at that time for warranty. So I think we're getting to change orders soon. Changes during construction, it's going to happen, there will be changes. So, you know, what we do is we identify what it is and what affects, is there a cost? And if there's a, you know, something that needs to be done, this is really more, this slide really is talking more about if there's a change to the scope, if there's a change to the scope, that perhaps you would actually change the scope, and you direct that there should be something that happens in the project that should be a change. That would be done too by a change order. So what, here we go, changewars. So why are there changewars? And here's all the things that could happen. There could be a code interpretation that is going to affect what's in the documents, and that would be one potential change. There could be unforeseen conditions that happen. And underground is probably the most common thing that happens, is a subsurface sore condition that was not expected, be it sand soils or rock or water or something, that that could cause a change. And that'll be one. Owner requested changes, things that you have decided you want to add, or it could be alternates that we had set aside that you wanted to buy anyway, that we may be adding during the construction period. Could be some things that are cost reductions even. There could be some suggestions that come from the team that say, well, perhaps we might want to do this, remove that, and if so, we could actually see a credit if that happens. Things we miss, things that we as a team miss. And again, this is a one-of-a-kind, one-of-a-kind project, where we're teaming with teachers and community members and kids and everybody else to put together a set of documents. And we will do our best to be as accurate as we can, but I can guarantee you right now, we will not report that. I'll admit that right from the start. We will do an excellent job, but we will miss some things. And those are the normal things that happen, a small percentage of things happen. Things that we just, you said, we needed to have had that flag. You know, we didn't bid that flag. Nobody paid for that flag, we're going to add that flag. We forgot the flag. That's called an omission. And error are things that we may have actually made a mistake. And you said, you wanted a door over there, and we put the door over there, and it got built over there. And we knew that you wanted it there, that's it. And so again, those things occasionally happen on a project as well, they're very small percentages of things that happen that way, but that's another potential change.
Do you carry error and omission insurance?
We do. And typically what, I don't know if I have a slide of this or not, but typically, the, what's kind of considered a standard of care would be that if our errors and the cost of omissions to you exceeded 2% of the cost of construction, then that would be beyond our standard of care. Typically, we are way, way under that. And the reason I bring this up is because I don't want these kind of things to become sore issues that if, I can tell you right now, we're going to have something that's going to, that's going to look like we're stupid. You're going to say... You're going to say, how did you miss that? And I'm going to say, we missed it. We made a mistake. It's going to happen, but it's well within that 2%. It's probably within a half a percent of the total cost. And so it's really something that's part of basically the contingency that's included in the cost of doing a construction project in order to cover things like that. We had a mistake that was humongous, and it was like well over 2%, and yes, that's when... And saying, okay, that simply doesn't make sense to me when you tell me that. But other than that, there's going to be some small ones.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
When you say 2%, you mean 2% of the total...
Of the construction cost.
Of the construction cost, if we combine them, are we talking 2% of the construction cost combined? That's significant.
Yeah, yeah. And again, think about, like you're doing cars on an assembly line. You've tested it, you've done 400 prototypes, and you're putting a car out. And there's never been a car that's anything wrong with it. Well, you know, they're doing all kinds of testing and checking before a car goes on an assembly line. We have one shot out the door. We're doing this once with a group of people who've never done it before. So that's why 2% seems like a lot. But when you think about it in that perspective, that's the reason, is because this is a once-in-a-lifetime group of people doing something together once.
No, I think that's the industry standard. And clearly, when you have the element of human error in a unique environment, things are going to be missed, is the bottom line. But certainly, we all would hope that we keep them to a minimum and that the 2% conversation does not go beyond this meeting.
Absolutely, and we do too. And our history is that we're not going to have this conversation.
Which one of these items are our costs? Like, these change orders always cost you more than the cost of change.
Yes, typically when you, I mean, almost any time, if you're going to do a change order and buy something later, you're paying some level of markup. And you're also paying the C M for their level of markup on top of that as well.
So we would be better off thinking about everything upfront? And kind of like if you're going to buy a house, and I don't want to pay any changes, build it all into your cost and save it?
And we'd love to, but the problem is, is that we're going to find some point in time where we're pushing up against our budget cap, and we're going to have to pull back a little bit. Talking about some of those choices. Now, you will have set aside in this delivery method, what's called an owner's contingency. And that's essentially your pot to do things with. The C M is actually going to have a C M's contingency too, when you see their proposals. And that really covers different things.
Is that all included in your base cost?
It's included in the total project cost, yeah. And so when that all gets broken down, you'll start seeing the line items for those various things, and what's going to hard construction cost, what's going to contingency fees, C M...
So on top of the 1.5 million, there's additional contingencies built in?
Already built in, yes.
Just...
Yes.
You know, one of the things that's interesting about requested change orders, it's not always the case that it's more expensive. A good example was a district that requested an amphitheater and a greenhouse. The fact that the building was two-thirds constructed at the point at which they requested kept the cost of those two additional items down because...
Good timing.
Good timing. Everybody was in place to build those two pieces. So they were a bargain if you compare them to new construction at a later date. So sometimes it's really advantageous to write a change order for something that you want, that you decide...
Hey, we really need this new program, whatever.
Good point, yeah. Timing is everything.
Timing is everything.
So as far as action on change orders, we will issue what's called a proposal request if there's something that we need pricing on. And we'll get cost proposals back from the C M. We'll evaluate that and make a recommendation. What we typically see, and again, this is your prerogative, but we typically see that in order to keep the project moving, that either superintendent or authorized district representative has the authority by a board action to sign change orders up to a certain threshold. And we see that generally anywhere from $25,000 to $50,000. And I know you say it's a lot of money. But holding up construction can be even more. And that's the reason for this, is because if we're in the midst of doing something and there's a necessary change that has to happen, it's important to be able to expedite that. And to be able to give authorization to do so, because if we have to wait for a board meeting to do it, what you may also get instead of just a change order is a delay claim. And the delay claim may cost you more than the change order. So, you know, there has to be some evaluation of that that's considered. So again, for your consideration.
Can I ask you a question too?
Yeah.
Talk about board meetings and things like that. We don't currently have monthly work sessions scheduled. Should we be looking for this next year at getting work sessions on each month in between board meetings, so that every board meeting isn't five hours long? And we're staying on top of everything in a two-week period instead of a four-week period?
It would not be a bad idea to at least have that in the back of your mind, whether it's needed or not, and if there's an alternate date, if needed, to have that. Because there may be times where there needs to be a special board meeting, but if you're somewhat anticipating it and know when that might be, it might be easier to plug in. And so if you maybe back off in two weeks between and say, if needed, this is kind of the date. And we may say, hey, we need it because there's some issues that come up that need some approval quickly to keep things moving.
But even these next six to eight months with a lot of...
There's a lot going on.
Right.
There's a lot.
Choices and things like that.
I don't know that necessarily if you will always need it, but there could be some times where there would be a need for that.
Thank you.
So really, last phase is celebration. And, you know, just, you're going to have a grand open, you're going to have an open house, you're going to have a dedication, you're going to have ribbon cutting. You know, really, that's just a chance to get everybody excited about that.
Is it typical to have decommissioning?
Commissioning, commissioning?
Decommissioning of whole buildings.
Oh, decommissioning.
Saying goodbye.
Yeah, and there's a lot to talk about with that because are you going to want to have an auction? Are you going to want to sell things to people? I mean, those are things you're going to come up against. And you may want to have like a last day at the building, some sort of event before, you know, you actually, if you're going to demolish some building. So when we get to that point, we want to talk about that in a lot more detail, about, you know, what to do with buildings that may be demolished.
In foreclosure, that's going to be very important.
And then lastly, it's always good to, you know, after a year, to kind of go back and do some sort of post occupancy survey and see what things were expected, how they're working, what feedback you're getting, so you know that just, you know, how did, how did the process go? Is there something you could be doing now? Is it something that has to do with something in the building? Is it something that has to do with where people use the building? Or is it something that has to do with training? It's just, again, a good thing just to kind of go back a year later and just do some evaluation. So that was the last... Eighty steps, ready to go? So that was the rest of the roles, goals, and controls. And if you have time, and I want to take the time. I have some, I just was going to share some photos and images of some buildings. If you'd like to see any of these, because I know you're going to take some tours.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
I gave a presentation at a national conference called Ed Spaces in Cincinnati in November. And I was going to show some images from that because it was all about different interior design spaces and just to give you some ideas of some different things. Let me get through the end here. So that was 1930 state yard classroom.
You've got a couple of those.
That was his first year of study. Last period.
I just want to really show you more images than this whole presentation. But here's some, there's some interior spaces, just some different types of areas that are multifunctional. I mean, this is, in essence, it's a really wide hallway that connects a couple learning community areas within this building. And so it's really kind of set up like classroom, but it can also just be for study. This is Bellevue, I think I mentioned Bellevue schools. And this is surrounding, it's got a lot of classrooms surrounding it, but it's really an open area that's set up as like a soft furniture kind of classroom, flexible. And again, it's, you know, it could be used by anybody in that part of the building throughout the day.
Now, just looking at that, going back, what are upgrades?
Um, nothing. That's just, instead of putting the, instead of putting the room in the classrooms, some of this room was taken out of the classrooms and put into these common areas. And I guess nothing might not be fair because there's probably a little bit more furniture in this building because there's essentially other space is furnished, so there might be a little bit more.
The furniture is really competitive. The supply of the furniture you will find, there are folks that really want to do this for you at a reasonable price.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Very competitive.
It's a hot market right now.
The ceiling's not extra.
No, 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 this is pretty basic. I mean, this is not, this is not anything that's costing anything extra in this project. Again, this is just some alcoves that's kind of carved out of the hallway, you know, so you have some study areas without really doing a whole lot. But speaking about some monitors and have some places where kids can do some work together.
I remember I had a couple of those.
This is one of a design sketch, but this is from our Westminster Kingdom project. And it's showing that center kind of flexible area that is meant to be utilized by all the different rooms surrounding it, but also serves as a teaching space.
So would you consider that more of like that transition?
This is really very, this is really on the far end, cutting edge. Westminster Kingdom is a non-graded school. And actually, within each one of these pods, it's multi-aged. So there's like third and fourth graders in one pod, and first and second graders in another pod. And the teachers do not have a classroom. So they actually have a space in here. And so each of the rooms are really shared by anybody.
Where is that?
Westminster Kingdom.
That was Westminster Kingdom.
Where is that?
It is down near Zane's building. So these are just some of the sketches from design. You'll see things like this in a lot of these spaces where you've got places to plug in computers and recharge. Because, you know, what you need now is a lot of power to recharge computers and laptops and devices. Shows of spaces. You see a lot of different furniture. This is actually Westminster Kingdom completed, so that's that center pod area.
Front night and day.
It's very different, it's very different. And when you go Thursday, you'll see one building that's pretty conventional classrooms and one building that has extended learning areas. Not as dramatic as perhaps as the Westminster Kingdom, but still, common workspace, common extended learning space.
I guess as I kind of, just as an individual board member evaluates traditional versus more cutting edge, it really is going to be, what are the outcomes? What evidence is there? So I mean, I certainly would rely on you to help us bridge the gap. Cutting edge and sparkly is cool, but only if it gets the results.
Right. Right, exactly right. You know, the education needs to drive what you want to do. And the spaces are going to support what you, how you want to be supporting. This might be a little bit more expensive than what you... These glass walls that fold back, called nanowalls, are extremely expensive. I'll just tell you that right now.
We had a much better experience.
With the nanowalls?
Yeah.
Glass walls?
Did you see what we did at Beaver with the garage doors?
I don't think I picture that.
That was the waiting room.
Yeah, instead of a glass wall in Beaver, there are garage doors that just open up.
Shouldn't we say that until you see it?
Are they pocketed or do they roll into the ceiling?
You have to see it.
Yeah, it's, oh, there it is, right there. Okay, see the big red thing in the back? That's a colorful, yeah, that's a colorful door.
That's it. Now, there's one right here as well. So what happens is, you have a conventional classroom, and you have extra wide corridor space. But when you take four classrooms and open them up, you can have team teaching, group presentations, lectures in 13 seconds. That's how long it takes to convert that. And there's real safety, there were safety issues going into that because they're very powerful. These are industrial, they're powerful. But the fun thing about it was, the teachers get issued the key, and they're strictly impulse. So in order to lower that door, you have to stand right there with the door.
And maintain pressure on it.
Yeah, on the key, yeah, yeah. So it's pretty safe. Unless you want to punish somebody. But this is an interesting feature because that's an 80-inch flat screen. And you have movable whiteboards that not only are whiteboards, but they work to secure the 80-inch flat screen. So that's your learning wall. You have K-Score beneath it, so you killed three birds with one stone. The flat screen went down a third in price from the beginning of the project to the time it was installed.
That even more sense.
Yeah. Incredible.
Can you share this presentation with us? Sure. Some of you would have these pictures, because I'd like to go back over them.
That's the cheap way to do the movable wall.
Same. Because they might move themselves, it's not too hot. Don't move it.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're curved, they're disgusting.
That's more high school space, but that's a high school science, high school science. Yeah, more high school space. The utility is coming out of the ceiling instead of floor, and so you've got flexibility and contraction of all that. So maybe that's a stem lab. I mean, maybe it's a room set up with just some things on the perimeter, and it can be, you know, an elementary stem lab. Not having a media center. You know, do you need a media center? Do you want to really, what do you want to do with books? You know, what, how do you want, what's your approach to a library?
It's a big deal.
So that's something to think about.
I was just going to ask you that. What is the trend?
Well, you know, there's a lot of resistance, of course, to not have books. And it's probably tougher at the elementary level because you have ancient books. But when you think about it, do you need a library of nonfiction? I can find anything I want on my phone right now. So do I need a nonfiction set of books?
So what do they typically see in schools? Like anymore, like, okay, so like a library, music rooms, art rooms, like what do they have? Do they have rooms dedicated for music study?
Usually.
That are different than a regular classroom?
Well, you have an open room, like an open room for music, because you want to have it, it should be flexible. I mean, but it could be... I mean, but it could be just about anything. It could be a room that's a music room, but it could also be something for like lab space even. I mean, it just, it could be anything.
I mean, I guess I'm just asking, like, do they put a room with risers in it for, for, like, they don't do anything out, like, I'm just...
Portable.
Yeah, portable is typically what we do for a music room.
If you build in, you lock that room down, and more often than not, you go back to a building that has risers. If you want to renovate it, you'd like to tear them out.
Yeah.
Because you want to do something else for it. So, so this building really took their library and broke it up into three floors and made it more of like a living room setting and kind of the heart of the, of the, of the floor. And so there are books, because it is a, this is an elementary primary building, so they did have a need for a lot of picture books, but they also had wanted a lot of movable furniture and soft furniture and make it more of a home setup than a library.
And I had a building also that was elementary level, and they decided to separate the media center, although they had a larger media center, it would not have been with the OCC game. They kind of took like a two-thirds rule and took the remaining third of that square footage and separated it into collaboration spaces within the first grade, second grade, third grade. So that became a nice flexible space for them to use either as a media center or another classroom area, or it became smaller, you know, tutoring spaces. The flexibility of that adding space worked out perfect for what they were into.
You were really close to this one down at, we were down at the Capitol Conference at OSBA. And this is just open, but it's a French immersion school, elementary in Columbus City Schools. And just wanted to show this. It, it takes the, the public space and really just creates some widened corridors. I mean, it doesn't have, everybody has a classroom, but there's a lot of, of common space throughout the building. And so it's really broken down into smaller learning communities with kind of paired groupings of classrooms, like kindergarten first, second, third together, fourth and fifth together. That's the office, I mean, and a lot of light, a lot of glass. That's the hallway kind of leading down to the classroom area that is meant to be like a gallery for, for sharing work. This is, this is a corner of the library. And you can see kind of out to the playground and some trees in the setting. And you've got some nice settings that, that you create some really nice areas.
There's many barrel tracks.
There's actually barrel tracks right behind the building, which was kind of, kind of a typical situation. We worked through it.
So what is, I'm familiar with a French punch pot, what is a French school?
It is a, they speak French. It is, the French is the language of the school. And so it's a magnet school for Columbus City Schools. They've got a French and a Spanish version to apply for that. All of the teaching is done in Spanish or French. And so they're essentially doing combined learning, so they come out in sixth grade essentially bilingual.
But isn't it also that in Columbus, certain areas, they have a big population of French-speaking or Spanish-speaking?
Yeah, they do.
So they build buildings to serve them?
So there's a library, the Bibliotec. This is a very colorful school, as you can see. So they wanted a lot of bright colors. That's one of the areas between classrooms, kind of the, the extended learning area between rooms. So it is, it's really just a widened corridor, but it's very spacious. It's very open. And, and it's set up so that there is visibility across and through. They did not want to have doors. In this case, they did not want to have openings, but they wanted to be able to see. So from classroom to classroom, you've got the glass lights and the cross, so it feels very open. So when you're in the middle, you can still see outside. They have a, kind of a science room in there as well. It's two stories. And one of the things they have too is a, what we call a gathering stair. So it's really a, a series of platforms next to the stairs, so it's kind of a little mini auditorium. So it's got a projector and a, and a screen on the other side, so you can really set up and have a whole group of kids. So just by making the stair a little bit bigger, you've created, in essence, a place where you can bring fifty kids together and have a presentation, a projection. So if you get down there, I think it'd be nice for you to go see it. It's not super outside the box, but I think it has a lot of in-between kind of feel to it, and it's just very bright. I have tons of pictures of this object too, if you want to see some. I've got four or five presentations. Well, I've got a flash drive right here, you want to copy? Let me see that.
I do, I just want to, I, I, I don't even always have to go, just to some of these things are...
You know, the concern about the twenty-first century learning plans is, is real. When the last large one that we did, we saw a couple of progress, that there were, there were good half of the faculty who were really concerned and uptight about making that change. And the whole notion of not having a home room was really disconcerting. So part of the bargain was, and I'm kind of, I'm kind of sorry I did this, but happy I did it at the same time. We were in good shape with the budget all the way through. Part of that was dealing with the CMR environment, because you are not allowed to be over budget. Okay? So with that process on point, we knew we'd have a few dollars to spend. So we made the commitment to the staff that, and with the understanding that most of the furniture moved, that if they needed more different or additional furnishings to make their program work, we would provide it. And we did. I mean, every, Tracy was a witness to this. We, we had, I think, four additional visitations to the furniture package in order to get everybody equipped the way they wanted to. And it worked. Some of the, some of the folks that were teaching at my age, you know, making the tough transition, made it pretty simple. It was really heartwarming to see the Elbow Plan work. The other thing that we did, we made sure that we had a backdoor floor plan, and that was, given that we were constructing these buildings with a lot of metal stud drywall construction on the interior, and an inexpensive amount of additional construction, you could go back and recreate a conventional floor plan if you found that the teaching model wasn't working for you. So two features that we put into the program to give everybody a level of comfort, in fact, is that the teaching staff is working pretty well with the, with the new environment. And it's, it's really exciting.
So we're all set on, we're all set on the visit Thursday?
Yes.
We're going to be at ten-thirty at Springfield.
Yep.
We'll have a couple of board members, three elementary principals, our main instructor, and Melissa.
Which principals are going?
Tim, Greg, and Michelle. Really, I didn't want to take everyone, and a couple others had some things on.
Sure.
Nice person, Steve.
Excellent. Thank you, Steve.
I left Chuck, or not just that one, but three others.
Oh, good.
Pictures on there. Go through that.
You can share those.
Talk to Melissa here, she'll be able to share.
I can share too.
As long as nobody does.
I'll share it to you right now.
All right, excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll see you guys on...
See you soon.
See you then.
Yes.
Travel safely.
Thank you.
All right. We have one more special report.
We do. We have Bob McKeever here from Field Turf, he's going to talk a little about the projects and some other information about the product that we've been looking at to install on our football, soccer, lacrosse, youth football field.
Multipurpose.
Multipurpose field. And one of the things, we did have a bit of a proposed changeover. If we move the band stand time, it's another slightly less than two thousand square feet that could be added in terms of rock and product and everything else. And I think it was around fifteen thousand now.
Everything is wireless.
To remove the grandstands?
No, just to...
Fill in. Fill in that. Just fill in the space.
If it's not there, we have to, they have to add more material.
You mean the cover for the technology?
But yeah, that does make a habit, like put it somewhere else.
No, you can still put it on. Probably still use...
With the four.
Yeah, well, I guess, I had to, I had to leave early, so I don't know what the final conclusion was.
There was not. We can plug in here, trust me.
I guess the, the one...
We're going to turn on this. I guess as I recall, and as I left, the, well, I thought this was a workable solution was to, to have no permit stands for the band, but the, basically on the concession end, that's where we put a, in essence, a movable set of stands.
We could put portable stands in there, but it would cost, we think it'd be about twenty-eight thousand dollars to buy portable stands for that end. But the question is, I started thinking about this, even if we put stands on the other end, and you're walking into the stadium, do you really want to see the back end of some portable stands as you're walking in? The whole purpose behind having the stands removed is, one, aesthetics, two, is being able to warm up and have a couple teams practice on it, like if they're the next game. And the most important thing for me, I think as a parent of a daughter who used to run track, is to be able to see someone running the entire circuit, the whole track, without having to be on the top two tiers of our stadium. Now, the question is, we can move the band into the last section of the grandstands, but it's a little bit more logistically difficult for them to get out of the stands and onto the field. Typically with our band, they, they got a little tailgate that they do with their, with the parents there, but it is only five times out of the year that we would have those issues because we have about five home games.
What is, where, what's, if you were to make a recommendation, what would your recommendation be?
My recommendation right now would be to put them in the stands, because then we wouldn't, they have the twenty-eight thousand dollars to spend, the additional cost. Plus, it would be at the other end where people would walk in, and you're walking in as the back end of, of grandstands. Now, the, the concern that a band director has is the fact that he does not like being, it's a distraction being next to the student section. And that's an issue.
Most schools have them next to each other. And if, if that is a concern, but it's not a concern at the other schools, but we do have the sheriff's department on hand. I mean, if that is a concern with safety-wise, we could place one of the deputies right there in that position.
Yeah, I'm not so sure that moving them further down where everyone will have to pass them to get to their seats is a real good idea either. But again, that's a concern, and our band director's been around for a very long time and has experienced, he said, some issues when, I don't know if it was in our district or in our previous district, where sometimes, you know, the students will try to take things out of the tube or something like that. I think what we need to do is set an expectation, that have our assistant principals there the first few games, sitting with them, making sure they know what the expectations are, and what the proper decorum is for students to be at a game. Just to cheer, you know, cheer on, and, you know, make noise, but, you know, also be with good sportsmanship.
I mean, it's a change, it's different from what we're used to, but, you know, sometimes change is good. And we're building a, this million-dollar stadium over here.
It's an expensive project.
It's expensive, and we need to make use of it. And I believe our band, you know, we have a great band, and I believe being in the stand, being close to the community, I think it would work out.
One of the things they mentioned too is the, the ability, the access to get into the state, to get into the field from the stands. We could make a couple of adjustments with the fence, with larger gates if we need to. It's one of the things we talked about.
Where are they going to put their instruments?
We have to have them up in the sand with them.
Well, and maybe we need to look at a lower section for the big instruments and the drums.
Because there's no place to put that stuff in there.
Because the walkways are very narrow. And they almost need to be able to walk on either end of their section wherever they're at, which they cannot do right now. So I think that's something we need to investigate also, because I don't think it's as simple as, in my opinion, sticking them up in a corner.
You know, I mean, you mean having, I don't know if you can see the, getting that off the wall. You're talking about having a...
Walkway there.
On the other side.
Yes, on both ends of it, yes.
Cutting that, cutting about five feet off of that end.
I don't know, I mean...
That's possible, I think.
Or, or add to it, or something, but I, I don't think having one way out for a band our size and that kind of a thing, I don't think it's feasible without it.
I think that's, I think the size, the number of students that are in the band is, is partly what is driving them to want to be segregated.
Right.
When we have as large of a band as we have next to a student section, and we have a band director who, I don't want to say keeps very good control of the students, but they, they are very well behaved, I guess. I'm just afraid that you put them next to each other, things are going to start going downhill.
I mean, that's one of the reasons why I brought it up too. I need to, and we need to have an answer real soon, because we're going to, so long as the board approves of this project, I would like to have it on the agenda for January twenty-fourth. And it's going to cause a little controversy, so I think we just need to make sure that what we're going to do is...
Have we reached, have we reached out to the, to the boosters, to the, to the directors?
Yes, I talked to the director two, three times over the past six months. I talked to the band director last, actually it was on our workday, the first day back from, from break, where only the teachers were here and not the students. We had a long conversation, I'd say we probably met for about forty minutes or so, talking about it. Came in here, looked at some of the pictures that we are now, talked about some of our concerns, what the advantages and disadvantages are of having that in there. It's my understanding, we could still turf over it and put those permanent decks so long as they're on skids, right?
Yeah, as long as they have proper footing underneath them.
So, I mean, we could go ahead and still turf it, but then we're spending another fifteen thousand dollars and taking out a concrete platform. I have to assume just leaving it there for, you know, decide that we want to keep them back.
It works over in Sol, it works in Solon, it works in Adonia, two stadiums, two sections of stands, it works in Mentor, it works in Chardon area, it, it works quite a bit. I mean, it's just something that we're not used to, but I believe we're, we're putting a lot of dollars into this project. And moving stands, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, I mean, I fully agree with you. I just can't get past, I guess I can't stop thinking about the fact that we're still talking about five home games, and affecting the usage of the stadium for five games. Versus what it means to all the different sports and all the different, right.
Like I said, I went out there, after I had the conversation with the director, you can see all the holes, though, if they were to run the whole lap, you could see if you're up on the first, the top three tiers. Well, it was cold after that day too, but, you know, and I did, I did some random checks using Google Earth to see what other schools in our conference do. I have them all in my office right now, but even some random ones outside of our conference. And most don't have them in there, but there is a few, as you can't say that no one has them. There are some schools that have stands in there. Rush has stands in their end zone, South does. Chardon doesn't have a track around their football fields next door, so that didn't really count. Mentor does not. Mayfield, I don't believe does either, from what I'm remembering off the top of my head.
Well, let's let Bob present. We'll get a look at everything.
Well, thank you for having me in. I think I met all of you guys at the OSBA show and talked to most of you one-on-one besides that. I know Jim and I have worked... I know Jim and I have worked very closely on renderings and pricing and everything. And I appreciate all the research you guys have gone in to do on this. Too many times people have, are looking at price tags, and they don't, I mean, they wouldn't even buy a $20,000 car for themselves if they didn't go out and drive it first. So you guys have really done an outstanding job of going on in different fields and really seeing what's out there and why we are different and set ourselves above everybody else. I'm going to go right into the most important thing, white field turf. We're the only company that's really investing in safety. We patented our product 30 different ways back in the 90s when we put this intellectual property together. And it really, and we didn't do that just off the cuff. They, we really did a lot of R&amp;D on it. What this study is showing, that we've been involved with, and this doctor has asked all of our competitors to be involved with it, no one wanted to, with the exception of field turf. What separates our product from everybody else is the infill. The sand and rubber that goes into the fiber that you walk on, you play on, you fall on, you dig in, you, you know, it creates so much, it's so much part of your safety and performance in the field. And that's what we're all about, the amount of infill. We have the heaviest infill in the business by a long shot. Most cases triple what anybody else has. The product that we are presenting with you guys is 9.2 pounds of infill per square foot. And when you look over the 80, 90,000 square feet, you know, you're looking at 800, 900,000 pounds of sand and rubber that we're bringing into your field. And that's what's protecting the kids. This study is proving that. Scientific data that's, you can't refute. This will be, it's in its sixth year of use now. What Dr. Meyer did is, you know, there's another graph that'll go into a little more detail of it, but he broke down the infill weights in four different categories. Nine plus is the heaviest, we're the only ones in that category. Most of them fell in two groups below that, which were between 5.9 pounds down to 3 pounds. And that's what these percentages of reduction in injuries constitute, are the nine-plus pounds of infill compared to the group that are from 5.9 down to 3 pounds. You can see in concussions, there's 8.3 less concussions on the heavy infill, 20.5 total injuries less on the heavy infill, and over 16% less severe injuries, player to turf collisions less by a big shot, adverse weather conditions. And the, I want to talk about that a little bit real quick, is the adverse weather conditions. One of the things you'll notice on our product is the stitches or the fiber's a little wider from one road to the next than anybody else's. It's a patented distance of 3/4 of an inch. We did that on purpose, because a moldy cleat is 3/4 of an inch. We're trying to provide a, an easy way for that cleat to penetrate into our infill that you're paying so much money for, utilizing that like synthetic soils, so the players can't cut on it. They're not cutting on the plastic fiber, it's slipping. So that's why there's a big difference in the adverse weather conditions. Although, it's because the infill weights are separating that, it really comes down to the wider stitch gauge, we're the only ones with the wider stitch gauge. And then another really cool one too was, fields that were four to eight years old, there's even less injuries on our product than four to eight-year-old products with less infill in it. And then eight-plus years, you see a huge spike. I think maybe too, that might be the situation, because we have more older fields out there than anybody else does too, but... This is a graph that kind of goes into the weight categories. You'll see at the bottom here, and nine-plus pounds is ours, and then this is, the six pounds is the lightest that Dr. Meyer would ever recommend putting in for American football. This is where most your other fields and the categories are in, and then there's a few and even less infill weights than that. But you can see that we are, with the exception, we are lower in every category. The ones at the far right though, you'll see that there's least amount of games played on those, because there's not that many of those fields out there, yet we still have less injuries on our 402 games than the other products do. And that's just a product of we have more fields in the ground than anybody else has.
Does that stay the same over, say, an eight-year period?
I don't know how old these fields were right here, but as you saw in that last slide, as the fields got older, our fields are the same age compared to the other fields are the same age, you'll see a huge reduction in injuries. So it actually gets better as the field ages.
So would you say that, say, year five and eight, would there still be nine pounds?
Yes.
Okay.
And just to make sure I understand, when you make the comparison at seven years, it's to other competitors at seven years of age as well?
Correct.
Over time, within the individual field turf field compared to, you know, the first game, to, you know, to the game?
I see what you're saying.
In that, so, so how does the field perform from a safety perspective over time? Is it better, worse, about the same?
Let me check with Dr. Meyer, I'm sure he's got that separated. He's, I mean, he's got over 2 million bits of information that are shipped into him almost weekly on the different games and stuff. It's just a ma, he's got the data, he just has to separate it. Let me see how hard it'll be difficult for him to, or easy it'll be for him to separate that data. But that's a great question. I'd be interested to see that too. You know, a brand-new field turf field, maybe that's one or two years old compared to an eight-year-old field turf field. I'll see if I can get that for you guys.
Maybe typically when you're replacing the fields at, let's say, that 10-year mark, you're replacing it because you need to put in a lot more of the infill? I mean, what's changed by year 10, let's say?
It's aesthetics, that's all. We are, we use the general terminology bump the field. It's a thing we do with, it's an ASTM machine that measures Gmax on the field. Consumer Product Safety Commission says we have to hold that field within 200 Gmax threshold threshold. The higher the Gmax, the harder the field. So they tell you below 200 is safe, above 200 is not safe. It's a good idea to have that field as it ages, not so much in the beginning. I mean, every other year is ample to have the Gmax tested, but when you get beyond year five, six, maybe, you get it bumped every year then, to make sure. And the only thing I can tell you is, Ravenna High School, their field was 14 years old before they replaced it, they were having the Gmax checked yearly, you know, they were never close to being dangerous. So the infill's stable, and that's the way it really is designed to be, because it is so heavy, it really doesn't go, you'll get a little bit in the shoes when you're brand new, but it really is not a significant amount. So it really doesn't add up to the overall weight of the field. The other thing we do, because we're vertically integrated, I'm going to talk about that separately, but we are constantly innovating. And what we're bringing to the table for you guys right now is our newest fiber, and that directly affects aesthetics. I mean, how long your fiber's going to wear is basically going to be how long your field's going to stay in place. Because after your fiber wears out, your infill doesn't wear out. Once your fiber wears out, it's not replaced, and it's just a factor of aesthetics. We've come up with, we came up with Revolution, our original Revolution fiber, it's a monofilament, which is really the way the industry is going, from the client base that...
Bob, just real quickly, can you explain monofilament as opposed to that split film?
Absolutely.
Real quickly.
There's two types of fiber in our industry, yeah. And basically, it's how they're manufactured. You have slit film was the mainstay of our product back when we weren't, it came into existence, that was all really technology add. And slit film is manufactured in sheets, and then it's slit in the fibers of the width that we desire. And it's put on a spool, and it's tucked into your product. Now, it's shaped like a piece of scotch tape, so it's not going to stand up for very long. In fact, it'll mat over within a year or two. We still use a lot of slit film mainly in baseball and softball, because we actually want that fiber to mat over and encapsulate the rubber a little more than what a monofilament does. But the monofilament is extracted, is extruded through its own dye in different shapes. So it's like a piece of spaghetti. Each one is extruded through its own dye. This is our newest one, it's called the Revolution 360, and we call it the Batman, because if you look at the cross-section up there, it kind of looks like Batman. But we found that this geometry is really good for extending the life of it to stand up. Monofilaments are designed to stand up like a blade of grass. There's unmatched aesthetics to it. It looks like a natural grass field. This is, you saw our original Revolution at North Royalton, we have it at Mennor, Shaker, a lot of schools, Rocky River, many schools around here. We have one school right now in Ohio with our brand-new Revolution 360, which is new this year, and we put that in at the University of Toledo, which I'll show you a picture of.
Bob, excuse me.
Yep.
I was doing some searching for your product. It's a great product, but I did see that there was some litigation in the past regarding your fiber failure. And is Tencat, are you still using the same type of fiber?
No, I'm glad I brought that up.
Or is it totally different fiber?
No, we do not use, in fact, Tencotti is supplying most of our competitors still. We will not use them. That's what drove us into manufacturing our own fiber. But we put, they came to us for first rights refusal with a product called the Duraspine. The Duraspine did not hold up in high UV areas. We replaced, we took them to court right away, because they said it's our fault, not theirs. They weren't standing behind their fiber. That's again, why we went into manufacturing our own fiber, we don't, we want to be in charge of our own destiny. So that litigation went on for over three years, and at the same time, we were replacing upwards of 70 fields on our dime, okay? We gave them a right to put in a new Duraspine field that would last probably another five years, get them through their warranty period, or we would, at the time, we were just coming out with our new Revolution for a slight upgrade in cost, we would put that in. So we gave the owner that option, and like I said, we put in upwards of 70 fields on our dime. At the final hour, they settled out of court with us, they knew where it was going. Everybody was happy with the settlement, but we did not leave anybody in the lurches.
That was a UV issue, right?
It was a UV issue, and that was actually a story that was not driven by clients, that was driven by our competitors and media. So I've got, I've got a good document I'd like to share with you guys on that, the fact and fiction of the whole thing. Because even the media came back and apologized to us, said, "We didn't understand it, they made it sound like we were doing something wrong out there, but we were using test data supplied us by that manufacturer that came up not to be true."
Was the issue, it became brittle, or just it was an aesthetic, it changed color?
No, it was, it became brittle. What happened was, what this, and it directly applies to this test here, this is called a Lisport test. You see the number 10 here? These are the four categories of splitting, because ultimately splitting is going to be the demise of the fiber. What UV did is it took all the integrity out of the monofilament, and it would split prematurely to the point where it came like Easter grass, and then it would snap off in the ends. So what happens, it actually shrunk, and then you'd have nothing but infill showing on the top of the field. They were never unsafe, but aesthetically it looked like crap, especially on a five-year-old field down in Texas or Southern California. So, but what we did was, we took this to Penn State and to Labosport, two separate independent laboratories, that have nothing to do with field turf, and had them do the Lisport, which measures wear and tear of the fiber, how long it takes to split. The typical design for them wants to see 30,000 to 40,000 cycles on a Lisport machine. And our old Lis, our old, our first rendition of the Revolution fiber, 70% of those were good after 40,000 cycles, which was the best of any monofilament tested. So when we came out with this a year ago, the 360, we said, "Take it to the wall." They did over three times the amount of Lisport cycles on it, and not one single fiber showed one degree of wear. Every fiber, I can't tell you how critical this is for the life expectancy of your field.
So the discoloration and wear pattern, is that warranted all the way throughout the life of the expectancy of the...
No, you're going to have, the fiber's going to eventually mat. I mean, it's going to fold over, and there's going to be an aging process, kind of like with your tires. You know, you're not going to have great tread all the way until the end of the life of the tires, it's going to be a gradual wear. So it's the same thing with the fiber, but what we're trying to do is decrease the, or increase the life before the fiber splits, that's when you'll see the end of the life. But you'll see, you know, through the life of it, and you've probably saw it on some of the original Revolution fields that you guys went and looked at, there are some areas where it's starting to mat on a six-year-old field, but all in all, there's no splitting going on right now, and that's the critical part. And it will hold its color very well too. We've got the best UV inhibitors in it, so you won't see fading. I mean, if you have an eight-year-old fiber and a brand-new fiber, you'll see some degree of fading there, but we warranty it a certain percentage of color loss over the life of the field.
Can I ask you a question? If the fiber's this long and you're putting that much matting in it, there's really not that much of the fiber sticking out over the top of, so, like, the matting, and they come in periodically and re, I don't know what the term is, but they come in with whatever machine and kind of...
Well, first of all, what, no matter...
We do it so like it's not going to mat that much, isn't it?
No, it's not. There's only 3/4 of an inch exposed on top of the infill. So yeah, it'll, it'll kind of curl over to what it is. So it's not really, the only thing that really, the soccer ball rule, they like that fiber standing straight up to slow the ball speed down. And that's really the biggest function of it, that and aesthetics, but really, you don't see the matting over except for the lights. And, you know, any NFL game, you see the under lights, the turf typically doesn't look all that pretty. It's hard, because of the reflect, the light reflecting off the sides of the fiber. So the more it mats, the more you'll see that reflection. It really doesn't have a, anything to do with performance or longevity.
All right. Since we are totally jumping around, I'm going to jump around as well. So at the end of the 10-year cycle, and you're putting down new fiber, do you have to take all the infill out and then, and then put the new fiber down and then put the infill back in? How does that work, I guess, is the most important question?
Well, up until recently, you threw the whole thing out, I mean, the infill and everything, but...
Okay.
We have come up with new equipment now where our patented infill can be recycled for credit to the new installation, and that's usually about 25 cents a foil.
You do it once, right? You can only use it once a month?
We don't know yet. We've, what we do, and what we've done is come in, and I could show you test data on probably a dozen fields that we've tested, we extract the infill out, take it to our lab, they put it through this ASTM test to measure the amount of silts and dust and everything else that we're doing to the infill, and then they rate it. And then if it's, everything we've rated is excellent through one cycle of turf. And the infill's anywhere from eight to 11 years old that we tested. There's, well, actually, no, there's another one that, one of them is 13 years old, so they've all come back excellent. We're going to reuse it in the next field. I can't tell you if that's going to go that way after 10, 12 more years. But we feel very comfortable with that for the, we're going to warranty it for another eight years, so. It is a significant credit, and it looks good to the community that you guys are recycling. So basically, what the process is, is we cut the field up into certain width strips, it goes up this conveyor belt, the same machine is cutting it, and then it dumps the infill into a big super sack. As that fills up, a forklift picks it up, takes it to the side where we're storing it for the next installation, and then they take the turf, roll it up, and throw it in the dumpster. That whole process that we just did at the University of Toledo on the glass pole, and that was 109,000 feet, we had that up in two and a half days, and had the whole stone regraded, ready for new turf. They put the new turf down, we bring in brand-new sand for the base layer, and I'll show you what the cross-section looks like. We use a recycled infill with the cryogenic rubber and silica sand for the girthy middle layer, and then we bring in brand-new rubber for the top layer. So you have new on the bottom and the top, and the recycled is in the middle. Yep, toughest fiber in the industry, what did I tell you? Didn't know, that was, that was way above our own expectations, to go 150,000 cycles. I mean, we were all jumping for joy, but this is the system here, the 360. You can, I hope you can see it, the three layers, you got the sand at the bottom, you've got the cryogenic rubber and silica sand mixture in the middle, and that's what really gives it, you know, the stability in there, because it really, the rubber's being weighted down by the sand, and then we got a pure layer of rubber on top. This is basically what the most of the competitors will offer you, just a layer of sand at the bottom and rubber on top. And there's a difference in the two rubber, and they're processed differently too. Cryogenic rubber is, we, basically, they're both are made from the same tire, we freeze the tire for cryogenic rubber, they shatter it, and the reason why we do it that way is because when it shatters, the rubber comes out round, just like the sand is. Sand is heavier than rubber, so we're using a lot of physics, it says that two particles the same size and shape won't separate no matter what the difference in weights are. That way, we know the sand's going to stay in suspension in that system and perform at a high level for the life of the field. a high level for the life of the field. The other kind of rubber is ambient rubber. They take the same tire, they throw it through a grinder. There's no way to control the shape of the rubber. It's in all angles and shapes. You cannot keep the sand in suspension with that type of a rubber. It's going to fall through the voids and fall to the bottom. But what you end up doing is you have a two-layered system. It's going to be a very lightweight infill. It's going to be very spongy because it's mainly all rubber on top. That's a little closer view of our Revolution 360. And Jim wanted me to put together this for your use on comparing grass and synthetic turf. This is just data from our experience on what it costs, artificial turf compared to grass fields, the amount of use that you can have on it compared to synthetic fields. And then it breaks down what the per-hour use is. And it's a fraction on synthetic turf, just because of all the extra hours and the lack of maintenance that you need to do compared to a grass field. Some maintenance you do on a synthetic field, but it's nowhere close to what a grass field is. Basically, over the life of the field, you're going to groom it an average of once a month. We know you're going to probably get out there every Friday night before a game and groom it. But then there's going to be those snow-covered months that you're not going to be on that field for three months. And then in the summertime, we know that you probably won't have a lot of people using it. Even if you groom it more than that, that's fine. But on average, most people are grooming their field an average of once a month.
Wait, I'm sorry. What does grooming look like?
We have equipment that comes with the field. And it's pulled behind, and it actually has three different kinds of grooming apparatuses on it. It's got drag brooms that are at different angles, there are nylon bristles that are just go across and groom the fiber. There's wire tines that go down into the infill, and then those kind of groom the infill and the fiber at the same time. And then you have these big aeration stars, basically. They roll in and they deep groom the infill, they decompact it. Those who use maybe not even until years three or four, and you do maybe three times a year. The wire tines, you won't even use for probably the first two years because you want that infill to settle. So the brooms are what you'll use mainly at first. The wire tines, most of the life of the field after that. And then the big aeration stars will be in the later parts of the life. So the grooming equipment's good for the life of the field. But in addition to that, there's other equipment that we have that we want to come in that we've made an offer on to groom an annual... Do an annual grooming sports champ where we actually pick up part of the infill, it screens it, cleans it, and puts it back into the field all in one fell swoop. You know, it's a $50-some-thousand piece of equipment. We made an offer to come in and do that three times at your convenience for no charge. And then we also will come in additional times for a lesser amount.
Is that the machine that took up all the underfield? Was it Buffalo, where that game was?
No, I saw the video on it. No, they just had what they call Laymore machines. They're street sweepers. And they didn't gauge the depth of those bristles properly, and they got way down and saw the rubber that they were pulling out of that field. And me and his crew didn't know what they were doing. So... But yeah, so... So yeah, the better you take care of the field, the longer it'll last.
But those are kind of things that you will come in and do?
Yeah, absolutely.
What about the snow removal? I mean, this is Northeast Ohio, so it's going to be more compact and hard to get to. It's going to lay there probably a lot longer than a month sometime. I mean, how much damage is the winter going to be here and will deteriorate the life of our warranty?
No, it won't affect at all. In fact, it'll probably make your field last longer, just getting UV off of it. But, you know, there's ways to remove snow on it that won't damage your field. We've got a full DVD on how to maintain your field.
Ford F-150 in a plot, right?
Yeah. You do. It's a blade, and you put the PVC pipe, is the most common way, on the bottom of the blade so you don't gouge it. And then that way, you get it down to about a quarter inch of snow out there, and it usually will melt pretty quick from there. We're working with brines right now when you get it down.
I'm sorry, do you have to remove the snow, or can you just let it go?
No, just let it go if you want it.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have any winter activities, so probably your option.
Well, I asked that same question when we went and talked to these guys at OSBA, and that was the same answer we got, too, from Bob's boss, was that he said the snow would protect it. He said it really was... That was the exact answer, that it was beneficial.
My union, they're probably the biggest school for removing snow because they always play so late in the playoffs. And if time comes where you guys do need to... You know, we can always put you in touch with those guys. Use our people, too. We can coach how to do it. But otherwise, yeah, just leave it out there.
Where do they have snow?
You want to hear that, don't you?
Think about that snow.
Yeah, we invented this whole industry. We've got over 7,500 fields in the ground. Some of these are older dates. We actually have over 20 years in the industry now. And, you know, the financial stability of us, we're owned by the Tarkett Group, over 125 years old. You know, we do over $2.5 billion in annual sales between the two companies. Our bonding capacity is over $75 million, so there's really no turf project that's too big for us. We are here to meet the whole worldwide demand of sports turf. We have three manufacturing facilities across the world. The one that services us is one, and we own them all, lock, stock, and barrel. We're not relying on any outside company. But they're located down in Calhoun, Georgia. Which brings us into manufacturing excellence. We make our own fiber, so we don't rely on the Ten Cotties of the world. What we're trying to do is be completely vertically integrated, so if there's a problem, we can handle it ourselves. We don't have to rely on anybody else. Our tufting mill is down in Calhoun, Georgia. That's where the fiber is knitted into the backing of the... Into the gray goods of the five-yard panels. Once it's tufted, then it has to be coated on the back to give it tough bonding strength, which is the amount of force it takes to pull the fiber out of the backing. So we do all our own coating down there. And it's not only our coating, it's actually manufactured by our track sister company buying it. They do... It's a high-quality polyurethane that we use for our tough bonding strength. So even our coating is manufactured by ourselves to put on our turf. We have a laser cut... There actually... That's a picture of a guy sewing a seam on the field, which is important. It's especially up in these areas. We sew all your seams. But the logos are actually manufactured in our factory down in Calhoun. It's a water jet laser machine, and it's hooked to a CAD machine. This thing comes in and cuts these logos out, and really quickly, it just sew accurate. And it's really helpful, like with your logo, where you're going to have multiple colors and curves or anything else. And we preassemble it in a controlled environment down there and then ship it to the job site, so it'll be absolutely perfect. That's just a picture of a very large logo. You can see the guys next to it, how it compares to the size of the logo. These three little things, I know you can't see, but we're the only turf manufacturer in North America that has these three symbols, and they're triple ISO certifications, which cover quality, being green, and safety. So, you know, another attribute to our quality. I know you guys can't read that either. These are some of the 360 fields that we have out there right now. There's not a ton of them yet. We certainly want to add you to the list, but some of the more notable ones are Gillette Stadium, only the Patriots, and their professional soccer team, the Revolution. The other one is Century Link Field, the Seattle Seahawks, shared by the Sounders. They're a professional team. University of Toledo's up there, too, and I discussed that earlier. There's going to be a picture of that I want to show you. Again, that's the field we recycled the infill on. They saved a lot of money on that field to do that. And at the university level, they almost have to show some type of recycling. So it really helped them out a lot. The thing, it turned out beautiful. I can put you in touch with anybody over there to talk about their field. They're so proud of it. But that is... That's the first Revolution 360 in the state of Ohio.
So is that what you're exclusively using now on all your fields, or is that...
No, we give you the option. We're not using the old Revolution anymore. This is taking the place. We don't charge extra to go from the old Revolution to the new. And don't get me wrong, the old Revolution performed beautifully. I mean, our six-year-old fields out there look better than slit film fiber fields. We're very... We just are continually innovating and getting better, is all we're trying to do. We still use slit film. On some, there's still people out there say it's not broke. Like the University of Wisconsin, Camp Randall, their coach said, "I loved it before. It lasted 12 years. Put it in again. I don't want to switch." So we still have some of the old dogs out there that still want the slit film. We use it primarily on baseball and softball, though. I recognize that. That's the original Revolution. Ohio State is putting in a rough 360 practice field this summer, this spring, practice field number four. Did you guys go out to the Woody Hayes outdoor facility? Okay. One of the fields was pretty worn down. Right when you walk out of the indoor Woody Hayes field. But that's one that's 10 years old now. They're going to replace it. Notre Dame, that's the original Revolution. UTEP El Paso, that's 360. That's Century Link Field there in Seattle. Montana Grizzlies, that's the 360. And Aquinas High School down in Florida, the high school football factory, they... I think that was the first 360 field we did in the United States.
Outside of the 360, obviously, you've done a lot of other fields as well. And I've almost made it a point that any time I'm watching a ballgame, I look up what kind of field they have, and almost inevitably, you know, 90% of the time, it's field turf.
Yeah. And I didn't put the list of all our NCAA schools up there, but just for instance, the Big Ten, there's no other synthetic field than the Big Ten but field turf. If they don't have field turf, they're playing on grass. Purdue, Penn State.
A lot of NFL fields, too.
A lot of NFL fields. We have 32 NFL fields out there. A lot of more practice fields.
That's the Browns' problem. They don't have field turf.
They are new markets. They'll be there. They have bigger problems. A lot of problems.
We have a proposal, Gary has it. One thing I want to mention, aside from the field, is the fact that we're refurbishing the track. The track refurbishing is an alternative of about $57,000, which is rather reasonable compared to what it would cost to replace. I know Schaden just replaced their track at Dr. Hanlon over there, and it was up around $300,000 to replace their track. Obviously, we don't have the money to do all of this at once. But to refurbish it, we're going to get another probably five to seven years out of our track. I want the board to understand that because as we're going through this project, five to seven years, there might be a possibility of having to replace the track altogether. But we think that we can get at least another five to seven years out of it, according to the experts, by refurbishing.
So we get five to seven years, and then another five to seven years in refurbishing? Or do you think that this is the refurbishment at this point, and then we probably are done?
I would say that. I would say that. With the $57,000, we can probably push it to another five to seven years.
Then it's got to be replaced.
How would replacing it be affected... How would replacing it affect the turf?
Well, as long as it...
Seven years from now?
It shouldn't at all. In fact, it's harder to do turf inside the track and not... You know, we have to take a lot of precautions protecting the track when we do the turf than the track guys do. Because they're working on it outside the field.
Thank you.
Because they're working outside the field, so they shouldn't have any problems.
With the drainage around the track, nothing?
No. Because everything still will flow off the track into the field. The field's being designed to handle the water from the track.
We're looking at possibly, if this is approved, to start second week of May and completing it sometime in July, correct?
That's correct.
All right. From a football coach's point of view, is there a crown?
Yeah, it's only half percent, though. Six inches from the middle of the field on the sideline, so it's virtually flat.
Okay, from a football coach's perspective, is that good or bad?
Depending on how many games you play on other fields. I mean, grass fields have usually bigger crowns.
Yeah, they're usually at least one to one and a half percent, so they're about double.
Right.
And then there's some of them...
And what it is, it's all about timing on outroutes and things like that. I was just curious on if it's flat or is it crowned?
Yeah. No, it'll play more flat. It's hard to even notice the crown.
Anybody else? All right.
Well, if you've got any questions, let me leave you guys with some cards or just get ahold of Jim, and feel free to reach out to me. But I live right over in Parma Heights, so I'm not far away.
Is fire filtered?
Yep.
I thought it was just really amazing how many kids they actually do in a year. Like, over 400, so...
Oh, we do over 600 here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we do over half the market share. And it comes down to performance and safety. That's the primary thing with us, is we're all about testing, especially with the woes we've gone through financially with outside vendors. But we honestly know that we've got the longest-lasting fiber and the safest surface for your kids out there.
That's our number-one criteria. When we sat down the first time, safety's number one.
The Stocker's actually winning awards on the safety data now, too. He's getting them through the Orthopedic Surgeons of America or whatever, but he's starting to win awards on this. So it's the real deal. And, you know, if you ever have an issue where you have a parent that's not happy that their kid got injured on the field, you'd much rather have something with some safety data behind it to back the school district. And we certainly have that.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming out.
All right. We are not done yet.
Jim, do you have any other updates?
The only other update I have... I have some other updates I'll give the board on November 24th. Still doing a lot of testing on our properties. I've been in contact with Laura Kramer Coons, and we're looking at the water usage in all the elementary schools. And what we're finding right now, the estimate for the EPA was like nine gallons. We had data for at least three of the elementary schools, and we're more around five or six gallons. Well, that's just a student. We didn't even count the employees in there, so it's going to be a little bit less. That information was all now sent over to Laura, and she's going to make the application when she has that to the EPA, so we get the ball rolling on the possibility of putting the package planned over there. The other thing, too, we have not forgot about the fitness center. You know, Mr. Molly mentioned about the walls. We think that with the budget that we have, we're going to forego the walls. What we're looking at is doing something like Burea did, and we went to a couple of different places. And what they did is they converted half the gym into a weight room without building walls. Turned out pretty nice. They have a couple of pictures of it as well. But you put the curtain down, and you put the equipment on one side, and it was... It was nice. Kids were working out in there when we were going to visit. Gives us more money to put into the floor, the equipment, and everything else. the floor, the equipment, and everything else. But one thing, though, we're concerned about, and while we slowed the project down a little bit, is we still have those tiles in John now, which we believe are asbestos tiles. And we want to make sure that whatever floor we put down on it, that when the kid's banging the weights, because it's inevitable that will happen, that it does not make-
Crack it.
-crack it and everything else. So now we're going to get the, one of the companies in to take a look at what we can do, how much it might cost to take out the tile. And that's going to take more money then out of the budget. But we have to do it. We don't want to get in a situation that we were in a few years back, where, you know, there's asbestos issues. I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
No, but that was my concern. I met with Mr. Sussler, and we talked about the matting. And I said, before we put anything down, I said, I want to make sure that that floor is protected underneath so we don't have cracked tile and have an asbestos issue. So that's my biggest concern right now.
Mr. Sussler's helping us out, and he's a teacher, he's a phys ed teacher. So we're looking at it in terms of what we're going to get out of it, in terms of the impact it will have on all our students to phys ed and health, and also as a coach, too. And the other thing, too, is with this curtain, we're still able to retain at least the smaller basketball court on the other side of that curtain. It's not ideal. It's not like the middle one. But at least if you push in the stands, you could still have a youth group practice in there. And all we have to do is just move the backboards over, the center backboards over.
The center of them in there.
Or buy new ones. We're checking into that, too, because we're not so sure how much, how smart it would be to take down the old ones and reattach them. So still we'll retain a smaller basketball court as well.
Good?
That's it.
All right.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, I have a couple of updates on the bond. There's a lot of stuff going on with the construction project. Tomorrow, Lynda, possibly Jen, myself, Jim, and maybe Chuck will be interviewing bond underwriters with the help of Mike Purcella from Sissina Associates. They're our municipal advisor. And so the bond underwriters are the bankers we hire, bankers that we use to sell the bonds on the market to help us through the ratings process, you know, to get our rating designation, and to get the bonds actually sold so we can get those problems in. So that's going on tomorrow. Hopefully, we'll make a decision on what firm we want to use after tomorrow's interviews. Going into, there'll be a ratings presentation with S&amp;P, which will probably happen in late February or early March. We'll either make a trip to Chicago or do a conference call to talk about our district. And, you know, Mike Purcella will help us through that process as well. For the sale of the bonds, there's something called an official statement that we put together, has a lot of information about the district. We're working on that right now. It's mostly done as far as from the Riverside portion. They get some data from the county that goes into there, and that's all part of the process, so we're working through that. The next item is the construction manager at risk. Back in late December, we had the request for qualifications posted on the OFCC's website to get a construction manager at risk. Have some people, have companies submit their proposals. The guidance is, once it's posted in the newspaper, it's supposed to be posted for 30 days. So I had it set up to be posted in the Cleveland Plain Dealer on the 26th of December. Well, I found out last week that they did not post that in the paper like they were supposed to, like they confirmed. So we had to extend the deadline. And so we posted it, it actually was in today's News Herald paper. We switched to the News Herald. And then so the 30 days had to restart as of today. So February 10th is now the new deadline. So anybody who's reached out to me from that time, I let them know that the deadline's been extended, and that was per recommendation of the OFCC. And I talked to Dan McIntyre, our legal counsel. And both with the magnitude of this project, he thought it was appropriate that we extended, you know, the deadline. So February 10th will be the new deadline for proposals from the construction manager at risk.
Did we have any responses yet?
We have not gotten any responses. There's been a lot of, I've gotten a lot of phone calls and interest and questions that, you know, probably at least once or twice a day if someone reached out to me. And a lot of people are just, you know, we sell windows, we want to talk to you, we want to do your concrete footings. And it's like, well, no, we're not anywhere near that. You know, we're looking at construction manager at risk, and they're going to be responsible for bidding out the individual trades. So fielding those calls and emails that keep coming in. Also, in late December, the sale of the bank qualified notes, bond anticipation notes happened. So we received $9.5 million from that that was put into our investment account. And Ryan Nelson at Red Trees already started investing those funds. And we had some funds available for certain expenditures that will happen in the next few months. And we're working on getting the non-bank qualified notes, the remaining $29 million to get sold this month, I think either the end of this month. The pricing date's January 17th, when we get the quotes from the banks, interest rates on that as well.
Are those all segregated from our regular funds?
Yeah.
So help me, so what will the bond underwriters pay? It sounds like we're going to, we don't need them to sell the bonds.
The underwriters who we need to sell the bonds, they issue what's called bond anticipation notes, that's-
Right, but that's a separate thing. We got like 15 basis points off, right?
Yeah, it was one and a half, it was one and a half percent interest rate we got to receive money in anticipation of the bond. The actual bond sale will happen in March.
Okay. I'm sorry, I thought I heard you say the end of this month.
That's for the, because there's, we issue what's called, in December, we issue what's called bank qualified notes. So that was, there's a $10 million limitation. It's a bond anticipation note to get us funds now. Then this month, we sell other bond anticipation notes for the remaining 38.5 million. It'll be 29 million in January. Those notes basically run through June 1st. There's bond anticipation notes. But the actual sale of the bond, of the actual bond we approve will be in March. It'll be actually divided into two portions. There'll be a bank qualified portion and not bank qualified portion in later March. We'll actually receive another 38.5 million. So we'll actually have double, we'll have close to 77 million at that time until June 1st, when those notes, those bond anticipation notes get paid off.
With the bank qualified, if I'm recalling correctly, it's somehow or another, we, because of the circumstances of that sale, we were 15 basis points less than something. There was a-
Yeah, you get a lower interest rate. I'm not sure if it's 15 basis points, but it's more desirable to get what's called bank qualified. There's a special tax provision with that. I'm not too familiar how that all works, but it helps us to get a lower interest rate and getting funds quicker.
Okay.
Any other questions on the bond? I know it's a lot of technical stuff, and it's a good thing that we have the Sissina Associates to help us do this process, because it's definitely been a learning curve for a while. Just two other quick updates. Tonight's, we have the resolution of necessity for the operating levy that we're going for in May, the 4.9 mil continuous levy, in hopes to bring back transportation and specials and to lower participate fees. And then the final thing I just wanted to touch on, it's kind of more of a fairy tale thing, but there was some news in December about a new state funding formula idea, you know, for school districts that Representative Brenner brought out. And basically, it was to, this is just kind of theory, it's, would be eliminating all property tax levies that school districts have, all bond issues be eliminated. They would do a statewide property tax. And it would be like a 38, 38.6 mil levy. So what would happen is, it would actually be for our district, be a large tax increase to our tax, to our community, to other communities, be a tax cut. And I think there were some highlights of it, you know, schools wouldn't be allowed to do levies anymore, just be ran by the state. It would be allowed to attend any school of your choice in Ohio, so wouldn't be certain districts of open enrollment, be pretty much statewide open enrollment. It prohibits any building projects from being approved for state funding. It would eliminate the OFCC. It would make transportation, the responsibility of the ESCs instead of the school districts. So it was kind of unique. But OSBA and OASBO ran projections of what would this mean for districts, and they have a list of all the districts. And it would actually result in like an increase in revenue for us, about $12 million a year, but also would cost our taxpayers a lot more money as well. But there's other districts that, actually, it was about $6 million increase a year in revenue for us. But some districts, like my previous district, Orange, would lose $27 million a year, or 56% of their funding. Cleveland schools would lose $131 million. Beach would have to lose $18 million. I mean, it was-
Shaker Heights would probably lose $100 million.
Yeah, I think it was, it was $41 million that Shaker Heights would lose. So it's, you know. So I just kind of wanted to just kind of bring it up, so I know people have some questions on it. It looks good in some districts, but it looks really bad in others. And I just wanted to kind of get the discussions going of what, of just the new ideas, you know, on state funding.
Did you, did you want to go over the, any information on field turf financing?
Okay, yeah. Based on the current proposals from field turf and the pricing we have, we're kind of looking into just financing for the turf, just roughly, it looks like about $81,000 a year would be a finance payment if we were to finance the turf. That's the, you know, that doesn't account for, we've talked about the cell tower that would go towards it, it's $19,600 or so.
Yeah, $18,000, I think, $19,800. So in essence, you're knocking off another 20 off the 81. It brings us down to 61.
61,000.
And that doesn't, we didn't account for anywhere between probably a $10 and $15,000 savings on maintenance costs on top of that. So we're in a wheelhouse about where we felt we would be.
Does Sam include the track?
Yes.
It includes the track, yes.
And subtracting out all the money that we would give them upfront from Lake Health?
Right. That would be financing the remaining balance, you know, after the Lake Health.
For how many years?
Eight years.
Eight years?
Yeah. Eight years is the maximum that the banks allows to finance turf. And I think once, once we get to a final point of the financing, the interest rates have been fluctuating with, after the election and everything, you know, we'll work on getting multiple quotes from different banks and different sources, and see if we can try to get a lower interest rate, you know, and try to bring it down a little bit.
When would we have that on our agenda to approve as a-
I would like to have it on the 24th of January. The sooner the better. They, you know, they could handle building other fields, multiple fields. But I would like us to make sure that we're close to being first on the list.
And we don't necessarily have to have our bank financing-
Right.
-in stone, like on that date. I mean, it doesn't matter, because we're not going to have to pay for it until-
Right, until like May or June. Basically, it kind of goes in stages of like the third of the price is due when they, as like a deposit, which would be like the Lake Health contribution, pretty much works out to almost a third. And then there'll be two other payments at some point in May or June, July, depending on the timing of the project. So we wouldn't need the funds till, probably about May is when I'm estimating if we were to finance it to get the funds in in May.
So will we be able to see a good contract to be able to approve by then?
Yeah, so long as, I mean, you know, I have the contract now. We have a lot of different alternates set in there in terms of the track, the revolution 360, instead of the, and we are taking the alternates. There's also an issue about bonding, right?
Yeah, I think we do have to have them bonded and-
Yeah. Costs a little bit more to be bonded as well.
Has everyone seen the pictures, has anyone on board seen the picture of what the field would look like?
We're still tweaking that, actually. But, you know, I mean, the main concept, we know what it's going to look like. We're at a point where we're looking at the thickness of sidelines right now. Because remember, it's not only a football field, it's also a soccer field, and it's also lacrosse. And we're trying to keep it to a design that's not real busy, and it's not going to interfere with the other lines of the other sports.
Yeah, pretty much everything is customizable, so it's, you know, gyms are working on getting input from everybody and what people want.
We're around quite there, actually. So just have to get the sidelines down. We're pretty much, we already know what the center logo is going to look like, we know what the end zones are going to look like. We're not going to alternate colors. Some districts will alternate colors. We're going to keep it one single color.
What are we doing in the end zone? What are you planning on the end zones?
End zones, we have Riverside on one side. If you're sitting in the home stand, left side's going to say Riverside, the right side is going to say Beavers. It's going to be black end zones, yellow lettering with white piping, very similar to what we saw with Toledo. And again, we, again, if you have that quick conversation sometime before the end of the board meeting about what we'd like to do with those stands, like I said, we can go ahead and turf it and still put them on there. But if we do that, it's going to cost us to take out the, to take out the pad. And I'm not sure if we want it there, we're going to probably want to keep the pad there.
We should probably finish that conversation now, then.
Yeah.
Okay, so what is your recommendation?
I, aside from the possible disappointment in a few people in the band department, I think that we would get a lot more use having it open. I think it's more fair to parents and kids that run track. And I think when you look at even the youth programs using the football field, a couple of minutes before they take the field, usually they're running through plays, they're stretching. There's no place to do that inside that complex unless you leave the complex and go out to the fields that are adjacent to the football field. Looking in terms of just the viewpoint or perception of a band, I see why they would want to stay there. I get it, I understand it. But we have to look at the big picture. And if the big picture is to do this project right and not regret what we're doing, I think that it would be nice to have that open area. I think aesthetically, it would look better as well. You don't have an obstruction when you're trying to watch your kid run the 400 or something. You can't, you can't see it unless you're way up on top. But I know it's going to cost some pains, it is. And putting them up in a stand or putting them at the other end isn't, it's going to cost us more to put them at the other end. And again, when you walk in, you're going to see the backside of some portable bleachers.
See if those are feelings on-
This is a big project. This is one of our biggest projects that we have going on. We have to do it right. We have to move, you have to move those bleachers. This is for just not five games, this is for the whole district. We have to do it right.
Tom?
I guess I am inclined, as Jeff indicated. The other observation I'd have, at some point, if, if the team be untenable, again, it would be down the road, but when we got to the point where we had to redo the field, we could really address it. I mean, if it truly does not work, then we can address it again at that point again. That would hopefully be 10 or more years down the road, but it's not necessarily really stone permanently.
See, that's one thing I wanted to mention, too, of Ms. Arden, is the fact that we looked at switching it, having the green space on the other end. But by doing that, we would have to move the long jump and the high jump. You can't high jump off of turf, okay? And then it would cost us more because we would still have to build up asphalt on the other end to put the track material down on the other end. So that's, that's why we're not looking at that option either.
I also am in favor of doing it the way you spoke about, removing the band stands for now. Jack?
I'm sitting here trying to make it out. I don't know.
No opinion?
I, I understand the five-game thing, but I also understand that we have a great tradition with our band, and that's a valuable asset to our community. So I'm trying to figure in my head right now. So that's my opinion.
Lynda?
I'm not a fan of moving the stands. I understand why you want to do it, but I'm not a fan of it. There are a lot of other districts that have stands in the end zones that have also gone with turf, so.
Well, at this point, I mean, it's, it's the majority to go ahead and turf all the way through the-
We'll do that. And again, we still have the ability, even if the concrete isn't there. If it comes down the line, or we decide that, you know, there's another-
That it just isn't working.
We can still move them on there. So we'll go ahead, and we'll turf that area, and then also have conversations with the band director. But at this point, it's our intention to do that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? Gary?
I don't have anything else.
All right, let's move to the consent agenda. Consent agenda provides for more efficient use of time. Any board member can remove a consent agenda item to be discussed and voted on individually, finance and audit. We do it through F.
A through E.
A through E?
A through E and F separate.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the items listed on the finance and audit consent agenda as recommended by the treasurer, items A through E.
One second. Excuse me.
So any discussion on those items?
Yeah, I'd like to know what the E is all about.
It's just a purchase order of funds?
Yeah, but I mean, are they doing outside labor on our buses, or what's that about?
Yeah, I mean, we do have outside companies pick up some of the work that we do, as well as parts. And it's part of the transportation's budget, from what I understand.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well.
Well, that is parts, isn't it?
Well, a lot of it's parts. I like to say majority of it's for parts.
Well, a lot of it's parts, I like to say majority of it's for parts.
Yeah, right. We do a lot of that kind of work in the spring too, when we get ready for inspection.
Right, I mean, that's, I mean, this is a direct correlation to removing a lot of the buses that were out on the field is that we don't have that capitalization opportunity. But we also have a improved aesthetics, so.
Didn't we also do lower purchase order, lower blankets to start with, because we don't want over bright purchase orders?
Right, and typically they do, they do it quarterly, too. And sometimes it's, you know, even if we used all the amount from the previous quarter, they just close it out and start a fresh one each quarter too, so. Doesn't mean we spent 40,000 last quarter or anything like that.
Is there any other discussion? Can we call the roll?
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And then we have F, a resolution declaring the necessity of levying a tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith, which is located in one of our exhibits. Do we have a second?
A second?
Is there any discussion on that? This will be coming back for a second.
What? The resolution at the end of the month. Yeah, in the month to proceed.
And then it goes to the Board of Elections-
Right.
By the beginning of February.
Right, because this resolution goes to the auditor, comes back to us, then we approve the resolution to proceed, next meeting and then final elections.
Could we just, for the sake of the people watching at home, can we just reiterate one more time what that levy will be doing?
Right, it's a 4.9 mil continuous levy, it's operating levy, and that was to bring back transportation, K through 12, with a half mile radius from the schools. It was also to bring back the specials, and was also to lower the pay-to-participate fees. Typically, I think it was 200 for most sports and 150 for, I think it was middle school, I think, band and track, if I remember correctly.
Those are the most notable, but obviously the fund would be used for operations in the district as well.
Right, right.
I just wanted to make sure that people understand what it is for, so we can reiterate it again as we do the next one at the end of January, so.
Right, it's not just for the, to bring the items back, right, so that'll help us keep the solvent for several more years.
Correct.
Is there any other discussion? Can we call the roll?
Tom Heck?
Wait, excuse me, aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Carried, personnel?
Personnel. Motion to approve the items listed on personnel consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent. Items A through F.
I just wanted to point out, we need to make one slight revision under resignation. Item two, we'll change the date to January 11th instead of January 10th.
There's no day, we need, I need that extra day for a training. She was gonna train her today, today was gonna be her last day, but we have no day, so I need her, but one more day.
One more day.
Can I get a second on that?
A second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, and with that, our next meeting will be January 24th, 7:00 PM. We'll make a motion to adjourn.
We are gonna enter into negotiations with OFCC this spring, and we're gonna need to have an executive session for matters of negotiation sometime either in January or February. Just, I just wanted to have that in the radar.
Need a second on the adjourn?
I'll second.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Your adjourn. Thank you very much.